We call the meeting to order. The first order of business is Roll Call David. Are we recording?
Yep.
If we can call Roll Call.
Alderman Boyd, not present. Commissioner Bradley.
President.
Commissioner Brown.
President.
Commissioner Peoples.
President.
Commissioner Reese, not present. Commissioner Alderman Cohn, not present. Commissioner Batten.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Boaz, not present. Commissioner Vines.
President.
And Chair Strader.
President.
And stated your other points.
My other point with that at the end, I think Dom will give us some information on what that, the information that Tracy and then she wants to share. Does she take it out? Is that what's up? Was that it? Okay. With that, the first, the-
And Nicole has met Jake, which I think left of you.
With that, the next order of business is approval of minutes. Entertain any motions on that.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. That we have approval of minutes David, if you would call Roll.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Batten.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Vines.
Mr. President.
And Chair Strader.
Aye.
And the motion passes with five ayes and two extensions.
Very good. There are two items on and the city will give us the presentation on eighteen R E Z.
Hi, how are you?
I'm fine.
Good.
It's your show.
Excellent. Good evening. As mentioned, the first item on your agenda is for a rezoning. It's by petition for the property four zero one through three three of Oliver Avenue. For all intents and purposes, I will refer this as a subject site. The area is one point two nine acres and contains one building on the northwest corner of the Oliver and Waterman. It is an adjacent Oliver neighborhood. So, I'm just going to give you a little bit of background behind the petition. The applicant initially applied for a subdivision of the subject property and was going to be proposed subdivision. It would create Lot A here in blue and Lot B in green. Lot A would be fronting the Oliver and Lot B fronting McPherson. At the time that the application began for a board public service, the city reported multiple departments from my view including the zoning section. During the zoning section's review, it was found that the parcel is dual zone. The biggest issue with the dual zone part where I'm going to explain this way that it was explained to me is that there is none and never was a legal description for the zoning area and so there's no way to decide which uses can be used on the parcel. And although there is a line on the map there, given that there's no legal description, it's fairly arbitrary. So, this is why it's good practice and why the zoning manager makes an effort to ensure the zoning follows the parcel boundaries. So, what the zoning section does in a situation like this is that when there's two zones, they use the most restrictive. And so, in this case, it would be B, multiple family dwelling district. The property owner, however, wants a divided wishes to use the results in Lot A, fronting the Oliver for a mixed-use building with commercial on the bottom and residential on the top. And they want to use the parcel in the rear, Lot B, for residential. So, in order to ensure that the front parcel is Dome H area, commercial district, and the rear parcel is Dome D, multi-family dwelling district, the best course of action is for the applicant to initiate a petition for rezoning to ensure that the legal description matches the proposed boundaries of the parcel. So, that's exactly what's before you today. Just to give you guys an idea of the subject site and a little bit of background, I'll go through some images fairly quickly. There will be a little key map to show you exactly what you're looking at. But this is the building on the property at the corner of St. Cur-, I'm sorry, at the Oliver and Waterman. So, this is an aerial image of the site with a bit of context. As you can see, the commercial center goes south, residential on the northeast and medical office on the two corners of southeast. I'll take you over to the images of the site as well. You've already seen the number one there, so I'll start at number two and then just go counterclockwise around the site. Some single-family residential to the east, west and southwest. The strip center to the south and the medical facilities that's across the street, that is corner from the subject site. And then some residential, multi-family across the street. And then that last one in there is the multi-family residential that's actually on McPherson, where the proposed residential Lot B would be. Probably not where, but next to adjacent to. This is a strategic land use plan that designates the parcel as neighborhood commercial. This designation is intended to provide commercial uses that serve the adjacent neighborhoods. And the proposed zoning change meets that end. While proposed Lot B is only proposing residential, it is intended to be component of Lot A as well. The adjacency rule applies. If you're unfamiliar, the adjacency rule of strategic land use plan allows some flexibility so you can use a designation which is adjacent to the designation on the parcel. The subject site is also in the planning area for the adopted St. Cur-Devolver Neighborhood Urban Design and Development Plan. I've outlined there the parcel so you can see it. Essentially, it lies within two areas that pretty well line up with Lot A and Lot B that are proposed. And it falls within the neighborhood core and neighborhood edges. So, that is, the proposal is also in line with the neighborhood plan. To recap, the proposed rezoning is in conformity with a strategic land use plan and the St. Cur-Devolver Neighborhood Urban Design and Development Plan. The proposed rezoning would bring the property into conformity with its intended future uses and would eliminate an improper zoning designation. And staff recommended approval of the proposed rezoning. Additionally, we give this a letter from the Aldermen, which is going to take one of the staff that you like. In support, we received this after his packet found out, so I thought that it would include it. So, I thought that we can include that for it. Staff recommends approval. The applicant is also available if you'd like to ask any questions.
First off, we'll allow the applicant to make any conversations or statements before we-
Yeah, thank you. My name's Michael Schwartz. I own the property here. We purchased this from, when UC Bank bought Lasky Bank years ago, they divested of some of their own real estate. So, they're still there as a tenant, but we purchased property. We are in the middle of construction converting the existing building. So, previously, UC Bank was the only tenant. They took up part of the first floor. The rest has been vacant for years and years. We are under construction on twenty apartments. Didn't get flagged by zoning when we applied for the building permit because it was, it is allowed under the, you know, the current zoning. So, but the parking lot is so big, we don't need it all. And we're going to, on Lot A, what we're proposing on keeping with the building, we're still going to have like forty-four parking spaces for twenty apartments and to, you know, five thousand square feet of, you know, commercial. So, what we want to do is sell off B to a new home builder to, to just extend McPherson, to fill that in, which we feel is appropriate for the neighborhood. So, that's the purpose of it. And when we submitted the subdivision plan, Mary note found out that we were dual zone and this is basically her recommendation to just clean this up. So, that's what we're here to do. Happy to answer any questions.
I'll entertain any from the commission first before I ask.
Got a question. So, is that, is that lot that you're planning on selling off, is that already flat? Is that a single plat or does that have three? Because I saw there's some dash lines on the-
So, that's, that's one lot.
Yeah.
And so, A, you know, somebody who buys that could build a multi-family similar to what you saw in a photo across the street or could then further subdivide that into up to, we'd say, three lots. It's a hundred D Y, so you could get three normal-sized city lots on there. But we would leave that up to them to, to do that.
So, Brown, did you-
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. I think it's rare that commercial property owners, residential property owners actively give parking space to the most, that's more than unattractive sort of land use that we have.
They have it giving it away. We're going to try to-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it's, it's a great thing. I think that you're absolutely correct. It'll add the density of the neighborhood and it's, it's great. So, thank you for being aggressive in that regard.
If I go clang clang, does that influence anything to you?
Ah, I think we can take bets on when any of us are going to hear a clang clang.
Sure. I want to echo what Commissioner Brown just said. I'm a resident of that St. Cur-Devolver and really glad to see things moving. And I'm also excited that the MetroLink parking lot and that awful strip mall are now slated for redevelopment. So, I'm going to be-
The strip mall is?
Yeah. I'm going to be, a meeting on October seventeenth.
Good thing-
I don't know if I just love the town.
It's a good thing Clint didn't know that. They sold me the building.
It's a proposal that was supposed to be committed about. So, this should be an exciting corridor.
Yeah. I'm, I moved here to go to Wash U twenty years ago and I never left and so this is- Yeah, it's, it's home. Yeah. Neighborhood's important.
And of course, the reference I made is that the Oliver is both the right-of-way for St. Vincent Greenway, changing to Forest Park and going north and eventually to Amsoil. And there are trolley tracks in the road right now. And there are trolley vehicles, not quite enough, I guess. One more, we're going to be waiting for in St. Louis. And sometime soon, they'll all meet up.
They will, they will.
A couple of questions. When is, when is your plan for the commercial? What do you have slated or?
So, the last, UC was taking five thousand square feet on the front of the building. I don't know if you can go to the front shot of the building. They, so they were taking this whole space about back to here. They didn't need that much space anymore, so they have renovated and they're now in twenty-five hundred square feet. And so, we're going to put the other twenty-five hundred square feet up for lease. We're going to-
So, you have to, no, to the-
We don't have a tenant yet. We're kind of using that as a construction office. So, when the construction's done upstairs and back, then we'll renovate that space and lease down.
And it looks, looks frankly like it's the premier space in the borough.
It is. Yeah, it is.
And can you give a description on your apartment's square footage, cost per square foot, what your mix is?
We're spending about just under four million dollars. We are not getting any incentives, nothing. We are using the store tax credits. Sizes range from about six hundred and fifty square feet to maybe right around eleven hundred. I want to say about a third of them are two-bedroom, the rest are one-bedroom. We have well over, well significantly more than one parking spot per bedroom. They'll be market rate high-end finishes at, I mean, price ranges will be like a six hundred and fifty square foot one-bedroom will be like nine twenty-five. We're not getting, we're not shooting for twelve, thirteen hundred dollar a month apartments like are going up, you know, since then. So, it's going to range for about, you know, somewhere around eight ninety-five to twelve fifty for the largest two-bedroom, two-bath. So, kind of, you know, they're, they're nice apartments. They're not, you know, they're, but they're middle of the road on, on price.
Is there an alleyway back there that we're vacating or not?
We're not vacating it. It's an existing functionally alley.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, the, if you see, we kind of kept, there was a vacated alley through there and I'm keeping that as part of Lot A. In the future, if we ever wanted to build structured parking with maybe a building on top of it, on that parking lot in Lot A, who sells, you know, have alley access, I would frankly love and you're the planning commission, so maybe you can make it happen. You know, if the neighborhood ever wanted to reopen McPherson through the Oliver, I'd be happy to give up our land that had been vacated up there. So, I don't know. There is, you know, the residents would probably hate it, but cutting off the streets, you know, you don't want to cut off the grid. It's kind of, anyway, yes. So, the alley is used and would be, I would imagine whoever would build houses or apartments or whatever on that Lot B would put garages back there and use the alley.
And immediately to the north, to the east, be the Hudworth Store that's now owned by Crossroads?
No, immediately to the north, there's like a six or seven or eight-story building. It's, I think, senior housing. I forget the name.
So, their portion of the vacated street, they haven't put to any active use?
It, no, it's actually, it's a really nicely maintained park. And I have no idea who maintains it, frankly.
Well, they'll find you in that.
I mean, it's, it's open to the public. It's not fenced off, so, yeah, but it's, it's actually really nice. People walk their dogs over there and, yeah, it's just, we're putting a gate into it. You know, we have a fence, the lot is fenced, so we're going to put a man gate so that people can access it easily. Yeah, it's a nice, it's a nice spot. So, yeah, I forget the name of that six-story building, but that's, that's the building that's here.
I think it's the Wicker Garden.
Wicker Garden, that's right.
And you refer to the question from Mr. Schwartz. With that, any, it's been moved, but the second, David, would you call Roll please?
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Batten.
Aye.
Commissioner Vines.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
And Chair Strader.
Aye.
Motion passes with all present voting.
Aye.
So, one thing I'd just like to note, what's the total cost of the project?
Around four million.
You'll go for a store tax credit because they're going to store-
Yeah, we have to store tax.
You're not asking the city for any tax incentives?
Correct. No tax abatement, no tip.
Correct. So, I want the planning commission, because there's a lot of debate around. So, the planning commission now has heard in two consecutive meetings, developers coming in for sort of a funky building, one in far south city, one here just north of Forest Park. And our residential projects with a pretty good hit on their rear pocket from the developer are exceeding a million dollars and they're not, they're asking for a zoning-type help for them to facilitate the development of the project and not asking the city for a dollar. That's pretty good.
I mean, it's neighborhood pay. I just finished the redevelopment of the Lewis Lane Publishing Company in Graboy Park. It's Texas and Miami, right on Jefferson and fifteen units, spent two and a half million dollars, stayed in federal store tax credits, but frankly, it would not have worked without tax abatement. I mean, it's, you know, it, it made it work.
Right. So, it's reminded that not one, one size does not fit all, but you can use that in both directions. It doesn't mean that, oh, I'm working in the city, I need tax abatement.
What's your time in audits?
We're under construction right now. I mean, I'm going to market the lot for sale as soon as I can give title to the lot. So, we need to, you know, the sooner the better. But I mean, I know there's a process and I think we, with all the meetings, we've got to go there and look like December.
Early.
Yeah, so. But I mean, it's not affecting the project under construction, so I'm not freaking out about anything. So, yeah.
Nice to hear a developer say that.
I don't say it a lot.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Have a good one.
Thank you.
The show's still young.
Right along. The next item on your agenda is for a multi-family, a lot that's near the neighborhood. It's going to be a little bit more complicated, so let me know if you're not picking up any questions. The area of the site is ten point one acres and contains one building on the southeast corner of Jefferson and Shoto. This is the current zoning map of the subject site. It is in both the J industrial and S neighborhood commercial district. This is an aerial of the subject site outlined in red. The one thing I would note, the aerial doesn't show the quick trip that's just across Jefferson, but otherwise is accurate. I'll take you again through some images of the area, starting with number one on the map and then continuing around the site counterclockwise. This is the office side industrial building that's just facing Jefferson, south of the subject site. And then we're going to head east. There's a mostly vacant site there. Then you'll see the two-family unit on the west side of Mberry Avenue and a vacant lot on the north side of Hickory Street between Mberry Avenue and McKay Place. You did see this site as part of the site that we reviewed for the redevelopment plan as well as the neighborhood plan a few months back. These are the townhomes on the northeast corner of Hickory Street in McKay Place and then a four-family unit on the east side of McKay North Street. The Shoto on the east side of the subject site, well, the single-family homes just outside that and then there's a filling station on Shoto just east of the subject site.
Wait, is that, is that one unit, one home or two?
Those are two houses.
Okay.
Yeah. And then across Shoto, there's an industrial building. And then there's an industrial plastic crematory building on the north side of Shoto, on Jefferson Mall. And then some industrial, as you get closer to Jefferson again, same development. And then across the street from there, there's an outdoor storage industrial site on the northwest corner, the right corner of the subject site. And then crossing Shoto south is the filling station that I was talking about, the quick trip that's not in the aerial just yet. The fire station just south of that filling station. And then getting into the actual subject site, this is the building that is in the subject site, the industrial building that you see on the right-hand side. And then everything else is vacant. Without a little knowledge of the area, I'll tell you where this proposed S U D came from. It is from the recently amended Lot A Square Neighborhood Urban Plan. The neighborhood went through an outreach and planning process to amend the plan, which was adopted in April by itself. With this amendment, this is the recommended change for the proposed zoning. You can see the outline there is matched for the special use district zoning overlay. And then this was the proposed change for, approved change for the strategic land use plan for the neighborhood. The language on the left here provides clear and specific aims of the area in purple, including height specifications and desired general, and desired uses and generally undesirable uses. After the neighborhood plan was adopted, a best of some plan was reviewed and recommended by the planning commission to the Board of Aldermen. This is the chapter ninety-nine redevelopment plan, which is reported in June. This reiterates the same requirements of the neighborhood plan, right here for you. Both of the previous items in the S U D reported today have been reviewed against strategic land use plan, designates the area as specialty use. So, the special use district is how we intend to implement all of those plans. The S U D provides regulations which vary from the current code in order to address an issue which in this case is flight and incompatible and obsolete uses, as determined by the neighborhood plan as well as the declaration of flights and the approval of the redevelopment plan. Therefore, the S U D is quite simple and supersedes the underlying zoning district where it is specifically addressed. There are three items that we're going, that we've addressed in the S U D. I'll go through the regulations themselves in the same order on the preceding slides. So, first, we're going to prohibit the uses in the J district, which are not permitted in the S district. The plan specifically specifies that the uses in the area should include those found in the E and S districts, including restaurants and bars. And it additionally specifies that it should exclude gas stations, cars, car-to-car dealerships and industrial uses. So, we use those specifications to choose which uses should be prohibited. And on the other side of the coin, we have permitted uses, which are not currently permitted in the underlying J district, but are permitted in the S district. And there's very few, but primarily residential uses, which are not permitted in J. We want those reprimanded from the dot-mac corner parcel. And finally, we want to include this, this regulation designed for the area and the neighborhood redevelopment plans with regards to height. It was drafted with a lot of care by the neighborhood to ensure that the existing small-scale residential uses of the neighborhood wouldn't be affected by an exceptionally tall adjacent building. But the buildings could get taller as the development approached Shoto and the grades changed significantly. So, this would ensure that specific characteristics was taken into consideration. So, I'll show you the use tables that were also provided in your packet. But you'll see very clearly that those uses which are not permitted in the neighborhood commercial district, but are permitted in the J industrial district, are prohibited in the special use district. Those items that are marked as an asterisk are those that are considered motor fuel pumping stations, industrial uses and the dealerships that were specifically called out in the plans as needing to be excluded. And then those items that are not compatible and not permitted in S are also listed. These are the conditional uses in the S U D that will be permitted on that corner parcel in the underlying zoning J that are not currently permitted in J. So, they will be conditional. The S U D does not allow us outright permit them. They can have to be conditional uses, but that does allow the use to go in that space that goes through that process. And then finally, the height regulations in that, for special use of this area. So, basically allowing anything that's south of LaSalle to be six stories and anything north of LaSalle to be four, five stories. The proposed S U D, recap, the proposed S U D is in conformity with the strategic land use plan and the Lot A for the neighborhood urban plan. And staff recommends approval of the redevelopment. If you have any questions.
I'll entertain any questions from the commission.
Mr. Brown, is this, this is city-initiated?
Yes.
S L D C initiated.
Call no.
Oh, planning initiated. I don't know how I could tell.
Patrick does that, because he knows I drink after this meeting. No, but, but Patrick adds a key thing. It's not for a petitioner. And thinking about it, we didn't include one slide we concluded, which is, over the course of the last six months, there's been a development proposal from, from a consortium of folks that have acquired this land or have partners with the acquisition of this land. They've worked with the neighborhood group to comprehensively redevelop those eleven acres, multiple parcels, multiple blocks. This portion of town has been a hot potato and subject to failure. It had an industrial use that blew up, racked air on it. And so, we, the neighbors and we responded to their plan and said, great, love you, do your plan. But there needs to be some change to the neighborhood plan to do that, effective. And those changes were made at a planning commission with a public hearing that our two new commissioners were at. That included the work of the, of the community and show and tell of the developer. The developer has this complex mixed-use development. So, to implement that, we, they've gone to S L D C, as Patrick has mentioned, to get tax abatement. And we approved the chapter ninety-nine. The chapter ninety-nine had to be formulated to be matched now with the revised neighborhood plan. It was. But there was one thing that needed to be on the to-do that evolved in our court, which was, the developer could initiate a change to the zoning or, as we suggested, will initiate a superimposing of the S U D to do these two sort of unique, one was a sort of a unique thing, is to help facilitate this development and limit it in some ways to the new guy or anybody else that comes to those help height things. And then the second is, the quarter property is a J industrial use that years ago, we tried to change. And it got into a little bit of a legal battle because it was attractive to motor fuel pumping stations, gas station. Gas station quick trip has gone across the street. So, these property owners are in this consortium. We're going to ask you to approve this S U D. It will now restrict their uses to what is in the wishing of the neighborhood, what's in the wishing of our two adopted plans with chapter ninety-nine and this. And we'll set the stage for this new development. for this new development. And that will be terrific. Time's going by a little bit here, and the new developer who we've had before us is trying to track outside development, and there's a little dance going on, frankly, at the Board of Aldermen about getting the redevelopment plan introduced and passed so that the out-of-town developers are comfortable that the city is providing an incentive here. But the short answer, this is pretty interesting because it's multiple parcels. It's been cobbled together by a developer to get them all friendly, and we've put planning with neighborhood participation guidance onto the site so that people will get along.
Thanks.
Don, there is no such thing as short answer when you answer.
I know.
Two questions on the slide prior to comments of slight nuance. I notice it's churches. Do we make a differentiation between mosques and synagogues and other places of worship? Or, because when we use churches in the vernacular of theology, we're speaking of Christian houses only. So is there, is that intentional or is that just a nuance?
In the proposed or in the S neighborhood?
It says under the S commercial.
So that, that's the language that exists in the existing zoning district. In speaking with the zoning administrator, it wasn't necessary to keep that, that restriction in there. It basically just says that it can be taller than 85 feet, which I think that's a term of the language that is used.
You want churches, does that mean houses of worship?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Is that, is that universal or are we?
We consider it all.
Okay, I just want to be sure that we have a universal language or we're not being descriptive in that, too narrowly descriptive in that. Secondly, I don't see a letter from the Board of the Aldermen in this or any note or concern in this.
You're doing it.
Pardon?
You're doing it. It's, it's, it's the Alderman, so we're, planning and politics are supposed to be slightly separate with occasional interaction. We adopted the plan. We're adopting this as a regulation that will help make that plan be effective. It has to go to the Board of Aldermen, and there is a little dance going on about the redevelopment plan that's complicated, but once the dust settles, the local Aldermen will support this.
So since this is a self, a city-initiated action, it doesn't require alderman support necessarily as it would. We wouldn't expect to see it like we would if it was a neighborhood-initiated, like a government action.
Technically, none of our actions require understated alderman support. But it's a common sense.
Right, I didn't say it's not required. Typically, avoid any.
This other guy would be money if he, you know, doesn't go and get his Alderman's support. But this, this is both delightful in the planning coming together and a little bit of paint of politics to get it implemented in a timely manner. You will see it one more time, believe it or not, in that the historic district standards in this neighborhood are also going under revision and will come before us for, for it to be, those standards to be adopted.
Are there setbacks requirements for this zoning overlay?
Not within the overlay. They are within the redevelopment plan and of the normal zoning.
Are the, do we know what those are? And can they be changed with this overlay?
We probably could change them. Mary, do you know what they are?
I don't know what the setbacks are. I guess my head's to the J or the S District. I guess I tend to say if we could do it with the SUD, it doesn't specifically mention setbacks the way it mentions height.
What's your concern about the setbacks?
My concern is I want to make sure that whatever is built is built up to Shoto and/or Jefferson.
That was part of the original proposal. When the developer came in, they talked.
Well, lots of things.
But they seem to be very, you know, intentional about that, making it a more pedestrian-oriented sort of building design, but.
The Metrolink.
Yeah.
Was being incorporated into the business.
So there is a little dance going on that they, that the Metrolink alignment goes along Jefferson, and they also be willing to give up some front territory if they were to, if needed for Metrolink, and if particularly was needed to be able to have a stop there. But the good question is, I'm not sure there's a setback line that's been established there by comparables, but.
Right.
Because there's nothing there.
In addition, is that, are parking regulations and requirements part of, part of this?
No.
That's governed by the existing zoning and wouldn't be touched by this overlay?
Right.
But could it be touched by the overlay?
I'm not sure. We could, things like that can get creative.
What does that mean?
We'd have to look. We'd have to look. The, the developers are, are architectural principle.
Yes. Yeah. I just think it'd be, it'd be nice to guarantee and also give the developer some leeway if there is a light rail station here in the future not to require necessarily an exorbitant amount of parking, and if we could take care of that now with this, that could be nice.
I will, I will tell you, one of my least favorite new buildings in town is a wonderful building. It's on the north side of Delmar, immediately adjacent to a Metrolink station. It's in an area that we did TOD planning. It's an area we did some preliminary form-based code thing. Is, we'd love for that building not to have as much parking as it does. It has a, it has an internal in the first floors of parking in a garage, and it's, it's near Wash U, it's near the Metrolink stop. The long and the short of it is, the developers would like not to have as much parking. Their bankers require the parking. And that's, we're hearing that a lot.
I could just look it up. The S District, the setback is no, fewer than six and no more than 50 feet.
There couldn't be zero lot line development?
No, but you want to tie along like.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that gives enough room for the urban areas.
And then you can get a better answer. We might take a look at the redevelopment plan when it says to.
What's the estimated timeline for the, for like cutting the phases, right?
It's kind of multiple phases. The, I would express on my tea leaves from the developer that remember, one of the things that happens in city government is that there's an aldermanic recess during the summer, and sometimes, you know, Mary's shop, which gets permits, can approve a permit, you know, they get it on a Monday and it's going to approve a permit in a very short time. When you need something that involves legislation, people often forget, oh, there's that down period. And, and so the developer now sort of has, oh, boy, not much happened in that time, including getting the redevelopment plan introduced at the Board of Aldermen. And that's making him a little nervous about his timeline because he's working with partners in other cities that might invest, which is why, there's a couple meetings going on. I made a, had a meeting with him and I promised him that we would do the things, as Patrick said, this is initiated by us. We're going to do the things, we have the staff do the things that will make it effectively enabling the neighborhood plan by doing the SUD. Other part of our staff is working on the historic district standards with the Lafayette Square people, and that will be done by December. So that's all good. It's a promise in our control. This little dance that's been going on about getting the redevelopment plan introduced and passed is a political one that I think is moving forward, but it's been baby steps that's been interrupted by that long summer recess. I mean, I, 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 hopefully everybody that's participating is realizing that, people are starting to realize that, that we're in an expansive economy and sometime that's going to change, and we want to hit people while they're still in the optimism, especially when they're outside of it. There's a Minneapolis firm involved in wanting to participate with this. So, so we'll, 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 I'll leave it at that.
A newbie, newbie question.
Yeah.
I apologize. And I'm not saying that my fellow commissioners support, support this, but we wanted to make setback requirement or parking requirements part of this. What is the process for that?
Let you send it back to us. We work on it.
With suggestions.
I think it is.
Yeah, so we'd have, so what Mary's saying is, we don't have documents, is, is that's the, the SUD, our zoning code is adequate. We fix things in a more comprehensive way and we put a form-based code on top of it. An SUD sort of is a fix. It has, as Mary's saying, in the enablement legislation, some parameters to what that fix is, and like Mary's saying, we'd have to check to make sure parking would be available to, for us to play with on that.
Number parking spaces for employees, customers, and/or visitors.
It's nice to have an attorney.
Have it in the flat.
So, so in other words, we could.
And the other thing is that there is a section in the zoning code that allows the zoning administrator to do administrative variances on setbacks and parking. So once we know more about the project, it could be established with an administrative barrier.
With that, do you entertain any motions?
I move to approve the SUD as proposed. Does that hear a second? Does this second it? May we get a roll call?
Commissioner Bradley.
Hi.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner People.
Hi.
Commissioner Benton.
Nay.
Commissioner Vines.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
And Commissioner, or Chair Strader.
Aye.
The listed passes with six ayes and one nay.
Very good. So I just want to say to that point, I mean, I share your feelings about parking. It's a wonderful exchange with someone giving up parking. And so in future scenarios, if this were to come up, I would be down to have that conversation. I think for planning purposes, it's probably something that Don would also look at.
I'd be excited about it. I also am not excited about once having a staff of 27 that's down to 14.
Yeah. So just a feature.
With that, the delegated items will be handled by Don I presume?
No.
You, it's a silly assumption. Hey, I, you know, Don said it, we can still weigh it out.
So you did have a little bit of a write-up on the one item that we have, which is in the downtown West Neighborhood, 21 by Locust Street, that is over $1 million. All of them are under one acre. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to ask them.
Any questions from the board personnel on the delegates?
And for Jake and Nicole, one of the things that we love about these particular meetings is two things happened in the discussions and the votes, is that in, Mary heard what was talked about, she talked about, she has some power to do it. We'll be, we shepherd developers along the way, and there's a little elbow we can do and talk about wishes we do that through. That's number one. And number two, in our system with so much going on at the Board of Aldermen and things that we're trying to guide from a professional basis versus just on ad hoc basis was a lot of controversy and setups at the moment. We love it when we talk about, we don't have a redevelopment plan before us, but we love talking about those things that are of concern and of logical interest from the interest and depression these guys represent when the Aldermen are present, because then they're at the dais at the Board of Aldermen and they've been educated and heard to that. It's, it's, they love to do that. Alderman boy in particular.
With that, prior to closure, let me just make.
Mary has a comment?
I was just going to say we also have the ability to sometimes lower parking requirements on projects that are over a million dollars when they provide a district bike park, because the bike park is called.
So Mary, explain the bike parking policy, which was adopted.
So it's a, instead of like a vehicle parking requirement, it's a requirement for any development over a million dollars to provide mandatory physical parking. In some cases, depending on the type of development, they have to provide ethical banks, you know, storage areas that are secured. I'm trying to remember, I think it was about five years there.
Probably over there.
Could be another great location for one like that.
He won't, I mean, these, these guys are, yeah, so, so one of the things, this neighborhood's been traumatized by some developments, so it's a neighborhood resident that's the leader of making this concession. One of the things that we do have, have to, have to do is when we hear a presentation on something and then we're changing a law, these guys could go flying tonight and somebody else can come. We have now set the, what the standard is, so. And to be frank, to tell you that the Board of Aldermen discussion about tax abatement and where and who includes Alderman, Shane, so includes Shane Cohen, so it's, with some dancing going on.
With that, I want to offer a commendation, just to say your, your presentation, they're taking a step up. They, I say that as a full compliment. There's some, graphically, data-wise, there's some information that it seems to step up. So thank you very much for your effort and your work. I know with Don to your left or over your shoulder or at your desk, go on phone. I convince you anyway.
And Michelle is dying to say, you want to see, let me see, Cecilia over Don's shoulder while he's doing that.
And acknowledge, Young, when did you say you're due?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. We wish you the best to your family. We do expect you to be back at the board meeting, at least on phone. Wish you the best of that. Any further business notes or information to be shared?
Only that the census count is April 1st, 2020. We appreciate that. It's twins, right?
But wish you the best. With that, I will entertain the meeting. Motion?
Motion.
But Patrick Beach has been moved in there. Meeting call?